Work session here to the board. The agenda, I do need amend that to include the Water Authority Resolution R-16-21. Robin can go into details and explain. Y'all should have a copy of that. It's pertaining to the lease of the property over there. We have 20% interest in it. And we'll go into that when I get down to that. But I just need, is there any other changes? On the agenda? Okay. Put that on there. Okay, you've got that other on here. You said, Don, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're fine with that. Our public hearing. Our previous minutes of our meeting last month. Anyone got any changes, comments on that? Not put that on the consent agenda. Personnel status, number three, if y'all want to move down to that. No drastic changes. May have been a change or two in the jail. We've not, we did hire one person this week. For area of part-time in the cleaning. We've got one lady that's out and we did replace her there. Until we find out what's going on. She could be out for a while, maybe, maybe not. But we couldn't let that go. So we've got a part-time. We did do that. And, Don, do you have that foster? Okay, you got it. That's what, that's where you want it. Any comments on that? Questions? Okay. Move down to number four. This is board appointments, presentations, proclamations. The four A, this is a proclamation. If y'all want to come out, come on up here. We'll do this. This is a proclamation Foster Care Month, month of May 2021. And everybody, who you are and what's your date?
My name is Kathy Johnson. I'm the county director. E facts here and right now we are in the community foster care service. I finished with the prevention of April. To foster care application.
About the rate of water.
Right now we have 12 calls, 32 kids in foster care. And luckily, we've been able to maintain all but two in the community by using FICD Kim, which is Friends of the Family and also using family. So we're really focused on making sure we're keeping kids in our legal county, their legal schools, with, with family and their, their friends and that's, that's the big thing. So the workers down there are doing an amazing job. We're getting kids home to families. We're getting kids to their permanent families for adoption, guardianship. So I can't say enough about the staff and amazing work they're doing for our foster kids.
And you've asked of your staff. Now, you're manning it with what, like three people now? Is that right?
Yeah.
I know that's changed because we've had that, had some calls, you know, that people were concerned. And now I'll give you this, but that's, that's something would be a good time to answer that. It's not like it was before COVID.
No, it's changed and I think right now our leaders, as far as the whole office fully, we serve two different sides of the community. We serve people through food stamps and Medicaid, which is managed more regional. And then we serve on our services side through child protective services, investigations, family supports, ongoing services where we can maintain children with their families and just provide services and then also our foster care and then we also do adoptions. And right now, we're pretty much managing our services part with three, with three workers. We did get a new hire and we're excited about that. And she is from the area. So we're, there's a lot of the end of that tunnel. And then on the other side, we also have three workers who are working in Walker and Dade County. They have met 100% of their applications, the needs are being met here. And we have not received any constitutional complaints. So I'd say right now they're doing a wonderful job.
Okay, this is proclamation. It's named Foster Care Month, which is May of 2021. Whereas the family serving is the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem. For is the very foundation of our communities and our state. Whereas in Dade County, Georgia, there are 20, there are 32 children and youth in foster care being provided a safe, secure and stable home along with the compassion and nature of a foster family. Whereas all young people in foster care need a meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their lives. Whereas foster, kinship and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts and supports children whose families are in crisis play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect. Their violence launching young people into successful adulthood. Whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children resulting in a greater need for more foster families do neither. What I understand is throughout the whole, through the whole South and in Georgia especially. Those shortages. Whereas there are numerous individuals, public and private organizations, who work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in and leaving foster care as well as the enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents and the foster care system only as good as those who choose to be a part of it. Now there, therefore, that we, the commissioners of Dade County, Georgia, do hereby proclaim May as Foster Care Month in Dade County, Georgia, and urge all citizens come forward and do something positive that will help change a lifetime of children and youth in foster care. So proclaim adopted is sixth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Senator.
Appreciate, appreciate how you did. We really did.
I can't do that.
Come right here. We can get, we can get kind of all the whole table maybe.
Here we go. How's that?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Everybody fine with that proclamation?
Yes.
All right, move down to four B. This proclamation is for Home Forces Day, May the 15th, something we do every year. And we've done this foster care also many years. Everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
And, okay, we move down to Resolution R-16-21. This is the one that we talked about just a minute ago. This is pertaining to the Water and Sewer Authority Amendment. And this is a resolution. Robert, you want to go into this and kind of explain what's going on with that?
The, the county of 20% of tract land with the Water Authority, which is the 80% owner, of the tract of land that is purchased for the construction of a reservoir. So the Water Authority announced that they're meeting no urgency that they had tentatively entered into lease the property, the two landowners, X sales and to Malcolm Hartline. And so what this resolution is doing is approving and consenting to that agreement that they've reached. The formal terms of that agreement has not been executed yet by the Water Authority. It has just been done. However, there's some urgency in us going ahead and adopting this resolution and authorizing executive to, to approve that lease when it is completed because of vegetation is starting to grow in the property. We need to get going on that. So this will allow the county executive to approve the lease agreements with Jack Sales and Malcolm Hartline when that's completed by the Water Authority.
Okay. This just came up this week, right? You got a call. Because you just got, that's the reason we didn't have it. That's when we had to amend. Any questions? Okay, sounds good. I mean, it's just a win-win. Okay. All right. Number five, this is approval of SPOSS and capital equipment. We have five A, some 800 radios, emergency portable radios for New Home Fire Department. We have a representative here from New Home tonight?
No, check over here. Tell them it's a name on the page.
Okay, all right, we'll do that. And that was the Rodney Rollins, he's chief of New Salem, but he's also the, kind of the chair of our chief association. He's our liaison between them. So that's who was speaking there. I don't know whether you got him on camera or not, but that, we are going to table that one till our next meeting.
Hi, Ted. Before we go much further, can we pull this off? I would like to sustain from voting on this. So don't need to vote on this particular item.
I think you're right. So take it off the consent agenda and vote on it.
Definitely. That's good. Oh, I hadn't even thought of that.
Yeah, I need to sustain on that one.
I haven't even, okay, that's good. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. That's not a big deal. Just remind me, Robin, when we get to that form of wood market. But, all right. Okay, let's move down to five B. This is the concrete pad behind Trenton Fire Department. Mr. Ansel Smith, come up, Ansel.
All right, guys. We talked about this last week. We've got another bid, I think, in, but we, we've talked to some of the commissioners about the fact that the bid price was mentioned in the last meeting. We just feel like it's, that we should go ahead and accept the bid from New Palmer.
He was, he was higher. Was he higher or was he the high bid?
It was a little bit higher. I don't, I don't have the, he did three of them. I was higher.
Mr. Hartline, we started you with this, you know, whatever, we're in the table. I went on that.
Well, I was the one that asked the table the last time. I did call about six or seven different companies. And apparently, if you want a bid, you're just not going to get them.
No, we tried.
And to me, the problem I have when I ask the table is that when you went around the table, the actual prices did get out. So I think I'm a Kaiser as far as going along with a higher price. Just my other question is, I just noticed this, is there a reason that we didn't go through the Fire Chiefs Association to get this approved?
No, there's not a reason for it. We're, this is not really something that we go through them for. This is capital. I mean, this has to do with our building, nothing to do with fire, fire equipment or anything that we're buying, you know, for them. You know, it needs to be approved by them.
Okay.
No, me and Phil, we kind of talked about that because get approval is trying to make sure that we're buying the same kind of equipment so we can
Yeah.
make sure we can reuse or buy from the same manufacturer.
And that's what we do when we do that.
And when I had, the roof was leaking on the North Day Fire Hallway, we were having trouble getting bids. And I went out and solicited bids. I didn't go through the fire association to get that approved because it's a building.
And that's what we felt. We feel this. I mean, if it'd been, if it'd been fire hose, fire equipment, then yeah.
I'm good. I was good with it last time. It's something I'm still good with.
So what, what would be some other, other than equipment? If there was some building issues that you would write up something for all the chiefs to sign off on? There wouldn't be anything concerning the building? And that's just me probably being new, but I'm just curious.
No, not really. Just the association is so that if we buy turnout gear, we try to buy it in bulk. That everybody get the same thing because we get a better price instead of going with five different vendors. And that's the reason we do it through the association, hoes, all, all, any kind of equipment for the trucks and stuff like that.
The money now, as far as the SPOSS goes, you're looking at it being all right with that as far as, you know, we've got some other things that's happened kind of in the last few weeks. I mean, as far as the slide up here going across Morgan or to Sligo. But we're, we're all right on that as far as that.
The money is there. We're good. I mean, we had a healthy SPOSS collection for the month, this current month, what we just received last week. So we're good there. In fact, all the fire department money right now is there, including enough money to pay off all existing debt that was scheduled.
That's good.
I want to address though, your question, your response and help answer that.
Okay.
The Fire Chiefs Association, several years ago, two years ago, I guess, two or three years ago, approached us and asked us, you know, they, they wanted to bring SPOSS stuff before their board. And this is a SPOSS and a capital issue. Now granted, there's only so much you can do with concrete. And, I mean, you know, we tried to get bids. We've been trying to get bids. We sent this out three separate bidding times. I agree the last time, it doesn't seem fair when that amount was listed. But it's their, it's their rule, not our rule. We didn't ask them to do that. They asked us to abide by that. So I'm not saying that you don't approve it tonight. I'm just saying that they ask for things like that to come through the board. And it's usually just a discussion. I don't, I mean, I don't know that they've, I don't know if you've turned down anybody or not. I, I don't attend those board meetings, but.
And we appreciate things going through the Fire Chiefs Association. We're, we don't, we don't have the knowledge that y'all have of what you need. And it helps us approve stuff. It helps the public understand why we're needing what we're buying. So we really appreciate it.
But Kaiser's right. And it typically is fire equipment, you know, because you can get into, and radios. The, what we tabled tonight was dealing with radios. Because you don't want one fire department to have a particular radio that's made in California and then everybody else is, they can get from Dalton or wherever they choose to get them from.
Try to keep it on the same page.
Another thing, too, we were talking about, you know, county property.
Right. It is a little bit, it is different.
This is an improvement to the, not on the building, but to the ground, you know. So it's, it's really, you know, that's where you.
Yeah, the value of the building, but more, but it's, you know, that's part of it. And that's why we do that is because, you know, and y'all seen it before and I know Rodney's seen it. You know, you got three departments wanting one thing and then, you know, we get it and then two weeks later, the other two or three partners want it again. So I mean, instead of everybody being on the same page, that's what we're trying to do.
And two bays of the ambulance service uses it, parking lot, you don't think?
Yeah, they use.
They come around the back of your front.
I noticed when I pulled up and looked at that, that there were two ambulance doors there too. So not just fire department.
Yeah, yes. EMS service. More uses the Dade County Emergency Services. And the emergency services exist in a lot of our own people, you know, here in the county, so.
Okay, we appreciate everybody on board with it, Ken, right?
I'm good with it.
All right, put it on consent agenda. All right. Move down to five C. This is Lamar had attended one of the historic courthouse preservation committee meetings the other day and, and he's asked, asked us to be put on there. And Lamar, I'll just turn it over to you.
They, at the meeting, we were told that they're ready for the ref in phase. Been a lot of work done. I don't see Donna here tonight, but there's been a lot accomplished. Lot out in the public. We actually have drawings. Man, Phil looked at them today. We took a tour of the old courthouse. What I asked in the courthouse preservation committee was, are we at the point to where we could talk about maybe a construction management company to help, to help us do this thing live in a timely manner? And we've got family-owned business here in Dade County that's been involved with the courthouse. I'm talking about Blevins Construction Management. And they were respecting in the county, well-respected family in the county. And they've done work for me at the hospital. I think they were done in the attic. They were on the preliminary of the courthouse, so we wanted to have you here to go over with us what you could do for us and maybe help. So that comes to Donna.
You guys are all, we just finished the structural improvements at the courthouse there. So in the last time, the, kind of the whole scope was put out to bid, we, we looked at that as well. So we do have some familiarity with the building. From a construction management perspective, the, I guess, the way to look at that setup would be you're kind of hiring us to be your project managers, right? To kind of run all of the management aspects of the project. So whereas you would typically hire a general contractor in a construction management arrangement, you can do that for a lower fee because you're willing to accept some of the risk, right? So you're not asking a general contractor to bond it. You're not asking a general contractor to assume all the liability from all the subcontractors, so.
But all that on you, thank you.
Well, that's the difference. So we've been working in tandem where you guys are paying subcontractors direct. We'd be managing the process to make sure that schedules are met, you know, bids are received, that sort of thing, so.
You can offer ideas too.
Absolutely.
With your experience at the area.
Absolutely. We'll do drawings or reviews to make sure everything lines up. You know, we'd process all questions to architects, make sure all that stuff runs smoothly. Knowing that, you know, the county one doesn't have the staff to manage large construction projects. And this is a way to not hire staff, but get the management you need generally at a lower cost than having to hire an employee, so.
Roughly what, Tim, you know, when you, and I know you've done this before, Paul, but what, what percentage are you looking at? Is that the way you work on a percent of total project? Or do you do it, will you look at it and give a lump sum, like we'll manage this project for X amount of dollars? How do you do that?
Well, it, so a lot of that depends on the size of the project, the duration of the project. Just in general, what I know about what we're talking about doing over there, kicking around the idea of like a 6% fee, just for what I think the cost of the project will be and then how long it's going to take to do, right? We all understand that the county is not going to have money to go do all of this at once and knock this thing out in five or six months, right? It's going to be a couple of year process. And you can compare that to if you went and hired a general contractor. Well, if you hired us to do it as a general contractor, we're going to be in the 10, 12% range, right? So you're, you're saving money there to do that. But that's kind of what I think 6% would be a fair starting point. You know, if we get into it, say, okay, this is a little different than we thought. We can do it a little cheaper. We're willing to have that conversation. But that, that I think would be a fair
Yeah.
Starting to have a conversation.
Any questions? No, all of you know.
And I guess this would be for Robin. If we do, if we do it in phases and on our financial policy, if we do it in phases, let the ref in phase, I'm worried about meeting that $25,000, which that would be a look.
I would say, and Robin, you can, this would be more of a professional service, like you're hiring an architect versus a construction service, right? So I don't know that that falls under the same parameters as if you had a construction, if you're business out to GCs versus hiring a professional management piece of it.
We just need to take a look at the policy and see, Lamar.
And this is all this for information anyway. I'll let everybody know that this is to, it's a thought that Lamar's had and.
Yeah. And I'll answer your questions you got about how it looks, what it would.
Yeah.
Like, need to know what we would provide you guys, you understand what we would do.
Any questions, Phil?
Well, I want to probably look at it today.
Appreciate, appreciate you coming and all, and it's.
Yeah. You guys have.
Glad to have you, glad to have you here in Dade County, you know.
Well, we're happy to be here. All right, thanks.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Here's Donna.
All right. She didn't miss the boat. Move down to six. Um, six, this is ordinance number 05-06-21. This is amending tobacco, tobacco use in county park to include no vaping. Now, is this our second, I mean, our first?
I think it's the second.
This is second final, okay. Second and final reading on that. Is there any questions from the commissioners? Pretty well cut and dry, okay? All right, put that on consent agenda. Move down to number seven. This is ordinance number 06-03-21. Amending the special use board ordinance to appoint with the chairman. This will be approving the first reading of that tonight. Everybody fine with that? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll note that it was pointed out there was a typo at the public hearing. So we'll, I assume it's approving.
Yeah, you can change that. Yeah, that's just the timber ordinance messed up. All right. Move down to the number eight. This is intergovernmental agreement from the Board of Elections in the city of Trenton for the city elections. Robin, you and Don will comment on that. I mean, as far as what?
This is an agreement for the conducting of the city election in November, which we held in conjunction with a, with a county race that we also are having. And so it's very consistent with what we've done previously and with previous city elections that they have. And this is.
Yeah, an ongoing, it's just standard. Yeah, okay. Any questions? All right. All right. Move down to number nine. This is for information only. Don, if you want to give us an update, kind of we're into our cycle, our budget cycle and for 22, so.
All right, so we have started budget meetings with the department heads and the constitutional officers and elected officials and it's going well, you know. So that has commenced. We are so far on schedule. So overall, the schedule is behind schedule, but we are catching up quickly. Normally by now, we would have had, you know, a first rough draft for tonight. But we will have that hopefully by May the 20th. And following that, we'll start, we'll propose a draft budget to the commission by June the 3rd at the next commission meeting. And then June the 9th, we'll advertise a public hearing to be held. And that will be proposed on Thursday, June 17th. So if everything goes according to plan, that's the, that's the day that we'll have a public hearing. So kind of save that date and we're asking all the department heads, constitutional officers, et cetera, to come to that meeting for you and/or the public to ask questions regarding their budgets. Any changes or.
Constitutional officers, everybody in this room.
Yes.
Anybody that has anything to do with our budget, they should be here.
And then following that, we hope that seven days later, we can have a special call meeting on Thursday, June 24th, consider adoption of the budget. If, if it all works out. The next page over is regarding the millage rate. Just hold on that one because I need to talk to Paula and she's, we need to talk to Paula and DeVal as well as Angie Galloway about these dates because the different things happening in those departments, especially the Board of Assessors. We need to confirm some dates. So we may have to push some of this off a few weeks, actually.
Okay. Any questions for Don? Anytime y'all want to come in during the day and sit in on these things, we've, we got a schedule.
Yeah.
You're welcome. If there's more than three of us, I'll get up and leave because I'm here all the time. But y'all welcome to, to sit and listen and comment because some of them are lengthy, some of them are not, so. But Don, Don will share a schedule with you for next week and. Okay, move down to number 10. This is information two. This is pertaining to the ACCG 2021 Legislative Review. Don, you want to?
Yeah, so today, the ordinance for date held a lunch and learn and we appreciate that. Senator Mullis and Representative were both there and did a great job. I think they went to Atlanta this afternoon to sign some bills, some bills that they had sponsored in Atlanta. And that's where Commissioner Goff is, probably finished now and on their way back. But this is a summary provided by the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. It is the final legislative update. This is a great resource. It goes basically by House bills and Senate bills through the different tops, revenue and finance or, you know, whatever committee they were assigned to. So many of these bills affect us in Dade County. So take a look at that when you get a chance. One of those, if I can find it really quick here, is House Bill 317. We should have been, had it turned there. But House Bill 317 passed and this governor signed on. Find it. Ah, here it is. Page eight. It's the lodging facilitator tax collection. And I did not, I wasn't even aware this was proposed. And Evan Stone happened to be here one day. It was April 21st, actually. And he said, are you aware of House Bill 317? No, not really. And so we started looking it up. And what this does is requires online lodging platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO to collect and remit the county and city hotel motel taxes on short-term rentals that are hosted via these platforms. Many people, we have several Airbnbs and VRBOs in Dade County. In fact, I had no clue how many we had until recently and they've been coming out of the woodwork. So a lot of these people, the Airbnb and the VRBO folks have not been collecting that tax, the hotel motel tax. They collect sales tax, but they relying on the owner to do that. And, you know, that would be like you going. And, you know, that would be like you going somewhere, you think you paid everything. All of a sudden you get there, oh, here's 8% tax or whatever you got to pay. So this is much better and actually it's going to, I think it's going to locate people that we didn't even know about. You know, we've asked people to come in, but we, you know, if we don't know they exist and that they're doing this, we have, we had no way of enforcing it. So this is a new law that passed and has been signed by the governor. And this is just one of many in this book. But this actually will probably bring in quite a bit of revenue to the county and for the city primarily. The city has their hotel motel because they have the only hotel in Dade County sitting across the interstate over here. So just, just some information, food and salt.
Give you the report. Mr. Hartline, you got anything you want to add to the board session?
I'm sorry, Lamar.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, well, Robert, you got anything to say? I mean, to add anything? We'll go ahead and we'll adjourn our work session. We'll take about a five-minute break or so. And then we'll come back and go into our, our regular meeting. Appreciate everyone. Hope everyone stays here for our regular meeting. Thank you.
How do you get in? Sometime you get to come. You can't stop.